I'd like to call the meeting of January 24th to order and ask Commissioner Gabbard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Great, thank you. And with that, we are going to go into closed session for conference with legal counsel with anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, Government Code 54956.9, D21 case. All right, I'd like to bring this meeting back to order from recess. And do we have anything to report from closed session?
We do not have anything to report out.
All right, thank you. Moves on to item A, which is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion or any changes?
So moved.
All right, item passes, thank you. Which moves on to item B, public comments. I know we do have one request to speak, that's on an agenda item. Do we have any other speakers tonight? Okay. Which will then move us on to the next item on our agenda. Item C, which is a consent counter, there's no items there. Moves to item two, public hearings, coastal development permit, CDP 21-0008, to demolish a single-family dwelling and construct a one-story, single-family dwelling with a subterranean garage, and minor site development permit, SDP 21-0030M, to allow retaining walls up to a maximum of 12 feet in height located at 154 Monarch Bay Drive. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Justin Polley provides staff report, please.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Commissioners. Hello everyone, my name is Justin Polley, and I will be presenting coastal development permit 0008 and minor site development permit 0030. I'll be half the planning staff. To start, we have a vicinity map, which will demonstrate the location of the subject site. It is located within the Monarch Bay community, on the northwest, northwest of the intersection of Pacific Coast Highway and Crown Valley. The zoning designation is that of residential, single-family four zone. There are two separate discretionary permits which are being processed for this project, the first of which is a coastal development permit, the construction of a new, single-family dwelling and the demolition of the existing, single-family dwelling which is on-site today, which is located within the Peels jurisdiction of the coastal overlay zone. The second entitlement will be a site development permit, which is a minor site development permit, which is required for the overheight retaining walls on-site which provide access to the partially subterranean garage and living areas. Here we have the site map. Proposed project, essentially, you can see the footprint is pretty much a U shape on the subject parcel. There are two levels essentially, although only one is above grade. The subterranean portion will contain a three-car garage, a single bedroom and single bathroom, laundry room, storage areas, and two mechanical rooms with trash facilities. The at-grade, upper level if you will, will contain three, four bedrooms and four bathrooms, a kitchen, a great room, as well as a family room. You can see there's some other exterior improvements proposed, such as some hardscaping, some decking in the front yard area, as well as some site walls, fences, and a lap pool, as well as landscaping. Here we have elevations, which you can see the structural low point is identified as the finish pad at a vertical elevation of 158.32. This is where the established building height is measured from, to the top of the flat roof pitch, maxing out at a total height of 24 feet, as measured from that point. It's just another elevation, where you can just generally get a sense of what the parcel, where the proposed project looks like. Again, identifying the structural low point where that measurement of building height is being shown in compliance. Here we have an architectural rendering. Basically, you can see some of the exterior, exterior finished materials and just the architectural style of the proposed project. As you can see, it's a modern architectural design, utilizing large windows and doors. Some of the finished materials include combination of stucco and board-formed concrete. And this is a side angle where you can kind of see the slope of the driveway approach down to those lower subterranean portions of the proposed project. You could not see the garage door from this angle, but it is just catty-corner from those two large windows of the lower portion of the residence. Here we have, just identified clearly in the site plan, where I've highlighted the proposed retaining walls. Now, these retaining walls will vary in height. They will start at a height of around three feet, beginning at the beginning of the driveway approach, and kind of gradually sloping down to a maximum height of 12 feet in the motor court area, as you can see, located in front of the garage. There are walls on either side of the driveway approach, and actually, the wall, one of the walls on the right-hand side, if you will, you can see is kind of used to not only create the driveway approach, but also a small outdoor living area in the form of a courtyard, just adjacent to the driveway. The walls will be screened by a variety of plant species, which will help shield or screen them from the public right-of-way view. Also, the material, the finished materials of the walls will match the existing, or the proposed, single-family dwelling, in that it will be board-formed concrete, same color and texture as the residence. Here, just another elevation, just again, just identifying the proposed retaining walls that lead to the subterranean portion of the residence via the driveway approach. This is a development standards table, showing the required, proposed, and the, how the proposed development is compliant with all development standards, including setbacks, lot coverage, building height, minimum landscape coverage, et cetera. In conclusion, the project meets all the applicable development standards, has obtained approval from the Monarch Bay Community Association, and meets all findings for coastal development permits, as well as minor site development permits. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution approving coastal development permit 210008 and minor site development permit 210030. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Polley? Vice Chair Donner?
On the approval from Monarch Bay, in the first paragraph, they're saying the lot coverage was 41 percent, and based on the openness of the courtyard and this, I'm sure they meant sight, lines of sight into the courtyard from the street, that's why. And we say 37 percent, and 37 percent is just the building.
Correct.
What's the definition of lot coverage, then?
Our definition may deviate from the homeowners association. Ours is the buildable footprint on the subject site.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Go ahead and bring it to the Commission for discussion and the vote then. Close bump here.
So during this, I don't see any issues. It looks like a very nice residence to take the place of what's there, and I am very supportive of this.
Commissioner Gabbard?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Open. I believe that the project is consistent with the Danapoint general plan and the zoning code and the local coastal program, and that it's going to be a nice addition to the, to the Monarch Bay community. So I'm in, I'm in support.
No comments. I am in support of the project. It's a very nicely done project.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Donner, do you have any further comments?
No, no further comments. I agree.
All right, well, I've, I concur with everybody. I've visited the site. It's well, I mean, the, the site itself certainly needs some help, or the old home there. It's well-designed on the plan, it's certainly consistent with our zoning code, it fits well in the community, it's much, it's very similar to some of the homes that are there now. In fact, I believe the home just to north-ish would, has a subterranean garage, but it's very similar. And I'm in full support, it's a beautiful home, and can't wait to see it get built. With that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve SDP, or CDP 21-0008, to demolish a single-family dwelling and construct a one-story, single-family dwelling with a subterranean garage and minor site development permit, SDP 21-0030M, to allow retaining walls up to the maximum of 12 feet in height located at 154 Monarch Bay Drive. Second? Thank you. All right, that item is approved. Congratulations. Moves on to item number three, Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 21-0001, to regulate single-family residential duplexes and municipal code amendment to regulate urban lot splits pursuant to California Senate Bill SB9. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Plan Commissioners. The Commission first discussed the adoption of this ordinance related to Senate Bill 9 in December. And at that meeting, following discussion and the input from staff, the Plan Commission opted to develop an ad hoc committee comprised of Chair Nelson and Commissioner Gabbard to further review the ordinance and the Senate bill. So following two meetings with the ad hoc committee, we are bringing the ordinance back to the Plan Commission tonight. And just as a reminder, Senate bill was put into law in September and became effective in January. It has two components. One is to allow for lots to be split in single-family zones, and for two units to be built on those lots. So obviously, some potential issues we see is that establishing duplex-type development in our single-family neighborhoods has potential of creating some inconsistencies and consequences related to parking or, or density, and basically the neighborhood look. So we've developed an ordinance tonight that we feel addresses those issues. And here is a list of some of the development standards that were created. The items are italicized of what have been added since the Plan Commission first reviewed it. So first, first, in accordance with state law mandating a four-foot side mirror setback, a height of 16 feet if it's located within the required setback of that zone. If it's in the buildable area, it can go up to the height of that district. A maximum size of 800 square feet for each unit, and those units shall be attached. Parking is one parking space per unit, and idea is that those parking spaces shall be in an open carport, so to ensure that those parking spaces are used, rather than those potentially being used as storage or, or for housing or, or habitable area. Its limitations is that if you're dealing with an existing, single-family home, no more than 25 percent of the existing structure can be demolished in order to establish that second unit. And if we are dealing with a non-conforming structure, a site development permit process could be required. And lastly, a deed restriction we felt was important. One is to ensure those units aren't used as short-term rentals. One of the units shall be owner-occupied, and that the new unit shall be deed restricted to ensure that it is occupied by either very low or low-income households in perpetuity. Related to the urban lot splits, again, is related to an existing, single-family lot, where the lot can be divided in two, to establish two units on each lot. Some of the restrictions would ensure that one of those lots is no more, nor less than 1200 square feet, and at least one of the parcels shall not be less than 40 percent of the original size. And to ensure we don't have some unusually shaped lots, we have concluded some lot line regulations to ensure that the lots are somewhat perpendicular to one another or parallel to one another. And also, the frontage of the lot shall be the minimum width requirement, so we don't have some unusual characters of those lots as those lots are split. And then lastly, that those lots, or the units that are created should not be converted to condominiums. The lot split regulations are overlaying on the residential, single-family duplex regulation, so all units that would be established on these lots would also comply with the other regulations. So with that, we have the draft ordinance before you tonight, and we have a recommendation from staff that the Plan Commission review, hold the public, the public hearing, and also approve the resolution for forwarding on to City Council. With that, we're available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions for staff? Just go around, if there are any outstanding questions?
The only question I have is regarding the, the deed restriction for the low, low income. How is that handled?
Affordability is established by the state, so that we revert back to the requirements of the formal that the state follows.
All right, I've got a couple of questions here. So, and you talked a little bit about it, but I just make sure I'm clear. The height restriction to 16 feet is specific to buildings that are outside the footprint of the underlying zoning, so that would be the standard setbacks that, and then, if it's within the footprint, they could go to whatever's allowed within that district?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I thought, just wanted to confirm that. I think that was the only question that I had at this point. Oh, one other question, yeah. So I want to clarify, we are providing direction and a recommendation to the City Council, but we're not approving anything at this point. We're just advising what we think is a good idea, based on some of all the facts.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have one comment. As, as we read this, the objective is to provide low-cost housing in our city, and in all the cities that it supplies to. And in order to ensure that that is, is in place, long-term, all of them are deed restricted to low or low-income housing, both this lot splits and the duplex neighborhoods.
That's correct. Any new unit created as a result of this application's ordinance would be deed restricted to be affordable.
To the low income. And then the only other comment I have is that in our draft, the language we changed on the deed restriction for not less than 30 days to longer than 30 days for SB9.
And so that's a que, that's the question, we can, can you do that? And that would be contained in a motion if you want to, yeah, okay. So I think the question is-
I'll make that motion after the public hearing.
Right, okay. Okay, with that, we have one request to speak on this item. And it's Mario Spinelli, I believe is the name.
Correct. A couple of questions before we start. Has anything changed since last Tuesday, since I received the, the draft?
This is, we don't do, it's not back-and-forth dialogue, so you have an opportunity to address us?
All right, so I'll address the draft I received last Tuesday from Danny. Are we ready?
Go ahead.
Do I need, oh, one more thing. Do I need to address the zoning, the code and all that? Because I only have, I have five minutes, but I'm down to three, so I gotta turn around and break some things out of here.
Well, I'm happy to, to reset your time while we clarify that.
Oh, so I can do all five minutes?
Sorry, you get three minutes for your public ommet time.
Oh, okay.
So we go ahead and reset the clock when you get started.
Okay. Evening Commissioners, my name is Mario Spinelli, I live at 24952 Katherine Way, Dana Point. I've been a resident of 34 years, and two different residents, including the one I'm in currently. I'm here to specifically address what's on the agenda right now, this ZTA 21001, and the, the lot split, and also the Exhibit A dated January 24, 2022, pages 1 through 23. I was in the, I came into the planning office last Thursday, the 20th, 2022, and Brenda, the Director, was kind enough to make herself available. We went through several of the things that I had read, and to say that I was mildly shocked as to the contradictions in the draft her, what outlined in the streamlined ministerial approval process, would be an understatement. I've also read the letter from Mayor Jamie Federico, the letter of August 24th, along with 240 other city mayors in California in opposition to this. The passage of this law by the state should be clear as to what directions you should be taking by law. You and I both know what is stated in the procedures that you and your planning staff are mandated by law to follow, as stated in the mainstream, the mainline, the streamlined ministerial approval process. We both know what's in Senate Bill 478, Chapter 363, Section 4747, approved by the Governor on September 28, 2021 regarding HOA letters. We both know what the word "objective standards" means. We both know you cannot create new or subjective standards that are not consistent with the standards you have been using for multifamily duplexes or other residence living, living spaces prior to SB9. We both know you cannot request or demand from an APKAN, an HOA approval letter for the development of an SB9. The State of California has elected to make anything to do with SB9 void and unenforceable in the CCNRs by law. To request the homeowners association to give approval or denial is asking them to commit, to break the law. This illegal act, evidenced in said planning draft stated above and in front of the Planning Commission for approval this evening, if approved, is inconsistent with the streamlined ministerial approval process. Dana Point Planning Department draft states above requiring, requiring this, the specific building, building height, number of floors, walk, stairs, walkway, HVACs, not to be used, that cannot be sitting in the side and backs.
You can go ahead and wrap it up.
Okay. Is against the law. Saying that you have to use carports instead of garages is against the law. When determining consistency, a local government shall find that a provision, that a development is consistent with objective planning standards if there is substantial evidence that would allow a reasonable person to conclude that the development is consistent with the objective standards. A uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criteria available and knowledgeable by both the APKAN and the development, and development proponent and the public office prior to submission, and including only such standards as published and adopted by the ordinance or resolution by the local jurisdiction before submission-
Sorry, Mario, could you please wrap it up?
...is granted by this law. My understanding is, as a reasonable person with objective standards, that knows that the fullest possible weight to the interest of, or the approval of provision of increasing housing that you know-
See, I'm sorry, I'm, I've got to ask you to stop. I mean, you want us to, to listen to you, you want us to follow the law, we have rules, and you're not following them.
Okay, I thought that you said go ahead, go ahead.
No, I see you to finish up. All right, thank you. All right, bring it back to the Commission for discussion, item potential motion. Anybody want to get started, or have any thoughts?
I'd like to move that the language in the Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 21-0001, be in compliance with SB9 relative to the deed restriction of renting for periods longer than 30 days, and that, that, that the Zone Text Amendment, any references to that be changed in accordance with SB9.
Okay, so that's a mo, you're making a motion to recommend with those changes?
Correct.
Okay. Got it. I will second that motion. We'll just put it out, so we have that out there for discussion with the rest of us, and we add on to that. Commissioner Gabbard?
Yeah, since August of 2020, when the California Home Act SB9 was passed by the State Senate, our city staff have violently wrestled with how to conform to an ill-fitting, or ill-conceived, shockingly overreaching, and poorly-written bill. The ordinance before us is our, their best work to allow for affordable housing while preserving the character of Dana Point, and we are the mini, our mini-fence. As you know, other than my time in the Marine Corps, my life's work has been building houses. I've built houses in communities from Piedmont, Pennsylvania to, to Laguna Beach, and I've built over 15,000 homes in California. The authors of SB9 use a housing shortage of the legislature's making to declare a state emergency and blame local control residential zoning as the reason for the shortage. Yes, we need more housing in California, but there's not an emergency, and zoning has nothing to do with why we have a housing shortage. Every citizen in California deserves to have a say in how and what is being built in their city, and SB9 is nothing more than an attempt by San Francisco politicians to turn over all of California into a Bay Area housing net. In truth, there are two reasons why housing supply cannot meet demand in California. One is the maddening timing uncertainty created by the California Environmental Quality Act and the Subdivision MAC Act, and the weaponization of CEQA. The former is a Byzantine of mapping, study requirements, and agency reviews that has even the state's brightest planning, science, engineering, and legal minds struggling to accurately predict outcomes. And the weaponization of the CEQA allows environmental groups and those who may only have a marginal interest in a project to hold hostage, or housing hostage, to fund their causes, war chests, or to outright kill projects. Financial markets hate unpredictability, and these two factors create perfect storm uncertainty which limits investment. Until we streamline CEQA and limit how, or limit standing in housing cases, entities with actual physical damages, housing in California will be in short supply. What we, the citizens, are left with is this silly cat-nails game with Sacramento, wasting our staff's time and our tax dollars. We need to keep fighting for Dana Point, our, our rights as citizens, and not to be ruled by a bunch of people who don't know what they're doing. I stand in support of the bill, or of the ordinance.
Thank you. Commissioner Gabbard? Mr. Opel? No, okay. Vice Chair? No, all right. I got a couple of comments, and mainly, you know, I appreciate your help on the subcommittee as well as staff. You know, this was a, one of the worst drafted pieces of legislation that I've seen in years. And myself, as many of you know, I, I build homes too. And so, on its face, you would think this would be something that everybody would be champion, including people that make their living off of home building. I am on record as being opposed to SB9, not in its, not in its theory, but in its effective rollout, and how it actually ended up in front of us and, and the legislation that was drafted. And what I want to make sure is clear is that we're following the law, and that's what we're doing tonight. We follow the law, and we're doing what's required by law to implement the provisions of SB9. The provisions that we've included in there address the real-time issues that occur, and objective standards like carports help address the need for parking in our communities, as well as following the law, which requires that we cannot enforce more than one parking space. And so, you know, we could sit around all night and bat around the language, but I think, you know, the reality is, we've done a really good job in the face of a horrible bill to make a recommendation to our City Council to then debate the merits of the policy issues, and make a decision. We're not making a decision, our job is to make an, provide an informed recommendation, and that's what we've done. I, I firmly believe that this Commission and the City of Dana Point have done its part with housing. It's done a really good job, in fact, and if you look at many other cities in, in Orange County, it can't say the same thing. We've got Doheny Village, we've got the Lantern Village, as well as several projects that the majority of this Commission has approved over the last few years, and we've done our part for housing supply. And I echo Commissioner Gabbard's comments around some of the problems that we're having with housing, but SB9 is not the solution. That being said, implementing and making recommendations doesn't mean I support the bill. I just support following the rules. And with that, we have a motion, a second, so we can vote. All right, that item, recommendation moves forward. Thank you. Again, thank you Commissioner Gabbard for your time. All right, that moves us on to... Old business, short-term rental subcommittee update. Do we have an update?
We have been pretty quiet for the past few weeks with the holidays and just the return of, of staff. But we do anticipate bringing something to the subcommittee, full program, and then ultimately, the Plan Commission in February.
Okay, great, thank you. Do any new business tonight?
No business from staff.
All right, any staff reports?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Commissioner comments?
I'd like to thank the staff and the ad hoc committee of Commissioner Nelson and Commissioner Gabbard for putting their efforts into the Zone Text Amendment. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn.